We'll do pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think you guys are probably here for later, maybe?
Just here to listen.
Just here to listen, okay. And you have a report of some sorts, I'm imagining?
We're gonna go and do a walkover.
Okay, sounds good. So, nothing for open?
You're not who I thought you were.
He's over there.
Oh, all right, there you go.
Okay, so, nothing for open forum, public input? Okay, all right, so, we'll just move to approve agenda, changes to agenda?
I have a under action item, we're gonna include letter D. And we're gonna approve or accept whatever you wanna turn your resignation.
All right. All right, so, we just need a motion to approve that change.
So, second.
Move by Lashawn, second by Turner, any other discussion? Here none in favor, say aye. All right, sorry. Yeah. Full same sign.
Motion carried.
All right, no new conflicts of interest that we're aware of, so, we'll move to approve consent agenda. School Board will review the minutes from the March board, beginning pay existing claims and approve the ASBSD membership pool agreement and the district's renewal rates for health and workman's compensation insurance. A is approve March minutes, B is approve claims, C is approve ASBSD health insurance pool participant agreement, D is approve ASBSD health insurance pool renewal rate agreement, E is approve ASBSD worker compensation pool participation agreement, and F is approve ASBSD worker compensation pool renewal rate agreement. So, if there are no questions, just need a motion to approve.
I had a question. The, on the health insurance, did, and maybe it was discussed last month, but do we know the percentage?
Yeah, well, it was not discussed last month because the meeting wasn't till the twenty-third of March. It was a four percent, there's five tranches. Zero, two, four, six, and eight where the percentage increases, we were in the middle tranche, so, we got a four percent increase. And then, over the last eight years, the average has been one point seven percent increase. Average.
For us, or for everyone?
In the pool. It's really pretty good. That's really pretty good. If you look at the entire pool of ten thousand, Craig?
Yeah, you have just over ten thousand.
Ten thousand belly buttons. The utilization of that every eight years has only increased your health insurance cost one point eight percent.
So, we, our rate is based off of our claims, correct?
Yes. We were just, so, it goes based on, you know, how much you used. And we were barely over to get into the four percent, yeah. But they gotta have a cut off somewhere. We were like, just over a hundred point four percent or something like that, yeah. Yeah, it was like a hundred and under was in the two percent tranche. We were like one hundred point...
Something to get.
Three or four.
It was that close, yeah.
So, we went the other direction.
So, is there a dollar figure roughly as far as that increase?
For the single middle level plan, I think it was thirty dollars, it was either twenty-six or thirty dollars. We're still covering, I think it's seven, now it is seven fifty-nine to seven eighty-nine. And we're twenty-six dollars over yet. The eight fifteen is, that's what it was.
The board's contribution still is covering the cost of the one.
By twenty-six dollars, yeah. Does that make sense?
Okay, just need a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Move by Schonfelder, second by Niebel, to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? Here none in favor, say aye. Niebel, same sign.
All right, information staff reports, we'll hear from the high school principal.
Good evening, everyone. This is our busy time of the year, and when I say busy, it just feels like we got kids gone all the time, but for good reasons. We have state FBLA going on right now. FFA season's gonna wind up next week, we got state FFA at the end of next week. And then, the following week, we have, oh, sorry, this week, we got HOSA as well, so, we got state FBLA today and tomorrow. State HOSA Thursday, Friday. Next Thursday, Friday, state FFA, and the following Monday, Tuesday, state FCCLA. So, this is kinda that busy window where all of our, you know, programs are kinda finishing up their seasons. FFA's been doing really well, I think today we had two first place individual champions and had a very good day. I think we've qualified almost everyone for state, so, that's going really well. So, yeah, it's a good thing. On top of that, state testing started today, our middle school is testing this week, our high school will test, not next week, but the week after. Next week will be our home and the following week will be high school. So, yeah, there's a lot of things going on, and so, it's always kinda tough this time of year to build that consistency in the classroom, but we're working through that and doing good things. We'll start class registration probably that same week as state testing or the following week after, but it's coming up right around the corner, so, busy time in our world, but it can wait. Any questions you would have for me?
Are we keeping the, how we organize our classes, basically the same type of periods?
The only, only change that I would look to see would be is to try and make the SRB just a little bit longer, which I think we can do without affecting our day too much, even just the idea of maybe ten minutes longer. I feel like our high school lunch is five minutes too long, so, I wanna make an adjustment to make our high school lunch just a little bit shorter and put those five minutes on the SRB and possibly add five minutes onto the end. You know, we still get out at three oh five, and so, the thought of possibly moving the end of the school day to three ten is something we'll talk about here in the next month. So, I mean, you guys can think about it too and let me know if you'd see any problems with that, but that's probably about the only thing I would do to change the schedule. But I like the idea of daily SRB, we maybe'll change, like, right now, I kinda have it pulled tight and not travel from classroom to classroom for ten minutes, but maybe five minutes, get attendance, get announcements in, and then let them move for about forty-five minute window and see if that would help. Because the only thing students have said is that it's just a hair short. They feel like forty minutes, it's not quite enough time to sit down and get some stuff done. But I can tell you from experience that the ninety was far too long. So, trying to find that happy medium in between, but I like the idea of daily SRB. I think our eighty minute class periods have gone well. I like the idea of like, we, well, you know, if you remember one reason why we did this, getting band and chorus out of SRB, I think has been a good thing. And also, the idea of now they have eight blocks, so, you could have a seven block class and a study hall and be in good shape still too. So, there's some things I really like about it and we're gonna continue to try and move, but I don't think we'll revert back next year. Good question, thank you. Anything else? Guys made it easy on me, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I might sneak out here, I got my kiddos with me tonight, so, if it's okay, I'll... Thank you.
Have a good night. Adam?
All right, good evening. Just starting out with the AD report, not too much to really talk about, just that all of our, our sports are underway. We had our first ever softball game last week, which was fun. We had a great crowd in the park and it was a great night for it. So, it's fun to see, we got eighteen girls between parks and Ethan out, decent numbers. We lost the first game, but, you know, a lot of good positive things happening, and they played a JV game after the varsity game, so, you know, everything... It was a fun night. Track, we're getting underway here, I think while our first varsity meet, we had a kind of a practice run through at Yankton, but we go to Wagner tomorrow, so, that'll be a first time to be outside competing. Right now, I think we had a hundred and twenty-eight, if not, a couple more signed up, six through twelve through track, so, numbers are good there. Girls' golf is underway, we only have five girls out for golf, but, you know, they're gearing up. We have our first meet next Friday for that, that's actually the one we hosted, Mitchell. So, everything's rolling along there. We had our school play on Saturday night, so, it was fun to attend that, we had a full house. I think we had around two hundred people in attendance and a lot of young actors and actresses, a lot of sixth, seventh, eighth. I think we only had two high school kids, Miss Andre said. So, for a young cast, I thought they did a good job and it was a lot of fun to see them doing their thing. So, everything's going pretty well as far as that goes. As far as elementary, things have been rolling along, like Mr. Kimpeling said, we're doing a fifth grade science test tomorrow. Otherwise, we'll do most of our state testing next week, so, that'll be underway. We have our elementary concert will be next week as well on Thursday night, that's for the older kids, so, third through fifth graders. And then, I wanted to just report, we, we've talked a lot about our mindsets, well, one of the things we wanna do was, with our live to give, we did our penny war, and this year, student council, we decided to give back to the community, so, it was kind of a fun project. We put together gift baskets, each elementary classroom decided a business in town that they wanted to recognize. Would've been nice to recognize everybody, but it wasn't feasible, so, student council delivered fifteen different baskets around town, goodie baskets that were put together and just as a thanks. And so, it was pretty fun to be able to deliver those to businesses and say, hey, thank you for all you do, no strings attached, just, you know, we appreciate you and the support that you give us throughout the year. So, pretty fun to see the reactions from the community business owners on that, and it was really good for our kids to be able to, to go in and work on some speaking skills and some different things there. So, it was really positive, I just wanted to share that. So, student council and, you know, Megan Conrad is our student council director, and so, she does a nice job with those kids and they did a really nice job putting all that stuff together. Our next project that we're looking at for this month, with Earth Day coming up at the end of April, we're talking about maybe trying to do a citywide cleanup and getting classes out around the community, picking up trash or different things like that at the local parks and different areas. That's kinda the next thing on our to-do list, but otherwise, everything's going well. You know, we're under thirty days of school left, which is pretty crazy, and, you know, excited about where we're at and finishing strong, so... Anything for me? All right, thanks, guys.
Adam? All right, what do you got?
Well, I suggest, so, as I put in my notes, that if, use my time to go take a look in a tour, so, Mr. Weber's here to help with that and Jim's here, Jake is down at the other end, so, if you haven't been through the facility up to this point in time, we'll use my time, because they don't have a whole lot right now with session being over and stuff, so, we're in a pretty good spot on that. So, if we recess, if we go into recess, and then we'll just head that way and, I guess, walk like we have a purpose and get in and get out, I know you don't wanna be here all day, so, anybody, everybody's welcome to come, I mean, in tours, so, if we can go do that, that's what I propose to do.
Sure.
That's okay, so...
What a recess, seven eleven? All right, so, we'll go to, you're good, you don't have anything else, right?
Nope.
Okay, thanks for giving us a tour. All right, nine is, we'll move to discussion items, so, nine A is review policy manual, the following ASBSD policy. Policies are being presented for review and a first reading DJG. Ooh, this is gonna be tough on DK, DLA, DLB, and DLC. So, does anybody have questions about the policies that were included there?
I had a couple minutes. Tell me which one, DK.
Yep.
Bottom paragraph.
Okay.
School principals will be responsible for observing budgets, do they do that currently?
Yeah, Craig, I don't know, feedback on that, we give them some numbers there, that principals work on their own school budgets a little bit.
Yes, so, like during requisition time, we give them a number, we give them last year's, we, they go through and meet with each teacher individually.
I guess the part that I was questioning was each will also have, will also serve as custodian of activities accounts?
They do approve each, yes, because what they do is, so, all the bills and stuff that go through, like, when they fill out a pink voucher for the high school end?
I don't need all the detail.
Yeah, it goes to Mr. Case, yeah, that, we need him, we need that in there.
Kinda my theme, that just, we gotta...
We need that as part of that, they need to be, according to others, they need to approve those first.
And then, on DLA, top paragraph, to me, it just read wrong, because, I mean, that's referring to any reimbursement that an employee is requesting, but it's not gonna be... Let's see, where was it? No, that's not what I was saying. Oh, I don't know what this was here, I mean, so... Theoretically, this means that if ten percent of the employees want to have their pay deducted and sent to our city of Parkston, they could do that.
So, basically, it's an investment aspect, so, if there's a vendor there that people wanna work with, I'll give you like, it's an area of horse man.
So, this is only for the four oh three B?
Yeah.
Not any bill? But it is, yeah. I see what you're saying about that, it sounds like they can bring anything in.
Right, I mean, to me, it sounds like...
Is this how it was worded before, Mr. John?
To me, it sounds like if you had any, if ten percent of the employees decided that they wanted to have some money taken out of their check every month, that they could do it for whatever.
It's gotta go to a vendor, though, that they're...
And then, I think the reason right here that, those two words, organizational dues and annuities.
Oh, okay, that's what I missed, okay. I knew I would, smarter than you.
The only reason why we see, yeah, no, that's fine, but the only reason why we see that is, we have, I wouldn't say frequently, but we have more than one vendor that will dawn the door, that wants to find their way in front of the staff for whatever, investment purposes, financial purposes, or whatever, so, if one of those situations occurred in order for, allow them, you have the authority to say, well, no, we're not doing that. Because ten, if ten percent of those employees say, well, we'd like to work with that institution or that vendor, okay, then we need to probably take a look at that.
But we would still approve that.
Yeah.
Still seems weird, I mean, anything other than what you pointed...
And it says with school board annuities and dues, and that's, that's different.
And the dues really, that's probably, because that was in there, but we haven't, I haven't paid due my time here, but...
The last one's already been drawn.
No, that's...
This was the one that just read funny to me, so, this was the personal expenses incurred. And it says, I'm sorry, DLC. Reimbursement will be in accordance with the board-approved travel allowance. I mean, there's more personal expenses incurred than just travel allowance, right?
I mean, you approved the mileage rates, and that's what they're talking about there.
Right, reimbursements will be in accordance with school board travel allowance, which comply with the limits established by the state board of finance. So, essentially, what you're talking about there, anybody who occurs expenses while doing their duties, as assigned duties.
So, like if a teacher buys some type of supply, are there, do they do that once in a while?
Well, it's probably more along the lines of they're using their own financial resources to take a group of kids to point A or B or doing those types of things, and that's what you set those, those reimbursement rates as. So...
But you're just talking regular supplies.
Just anything other than travel, you know?
Yeah, they're supposed to get that approved ahead of time by the principal before they go do it.
Yeah.
And then, the principal, they turn it away, but we pay them, we get those bills every, so often. Probably happens more interestingly, you see it constantly, doesn't it? But we do have it budgeted, like, certain ones have, everybody has a fifty dollar teacher, pay teacher and a miscellaneous expense allotment in the elementary, for sure. Teacher pay teachers in the high school, some of them have two hundred because like food services, or, you know, a little bit more because of these, or fax class food budget line item, sometimes we reimburse for that.
I just wanted to make sure that this one's read, all the expenses are coming out of the travel.
Your whole premise of reading any of these is to make sure we're doing what it says we're doing.
Yep, exactly, yep. That's perfect.
And you're right, sometimes it says something that we don't do that anymore, let's change it, so, or get rid of it. You know, it's a policy that's obsolete, doesn't make any, we don't apply it, so, why are we doing that? Why are we having it in our manual?
That's all I had.
And I tried to look at that, I mean, I read and do that.
Well, and you read it different than I do.
Yeah, right. And sometimes, like, there's things that are like, well, you don't need to do that, it's not applicable, so, I don't even include it in there, so...
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, we'll move to discussion item B, review policy manual, the following ASBSD policies are being presented for review and a second reading, DJ, DJB, DJBA, DJC, and DJD. Those were included in last month's packet, if there were no more other questions.
Is there no JFCD?
That moved down below Craig.
That's in, yeah, for...
That one's for final?
Still approved, yeah.
I just...
Okay, no questions? All right, so, then we'll move to C, so, review policy manual, the following ASBSD policies are being presented for review and adoption, DI, DIAB, DIV, DIC, DIE, JHCDD, and JFCD. So, if there aren't any questions or changes needed, we'll just need a motion to approve those.
Move by Lashawn, second by Pearl, to approve those policies, any other discussion? Here none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, discussion item D is building project, the school board will, will review the recent timeline for the current building project and discuss any change orders associated with the project.
So, we just took the tour, I mean, you kinda gotta fill for the timeline, but if you wanted a true depiction of some of the, that's this pit's document right here, so, it has everything listed with where they're at. This is going all the way through the end of April, many of the different components, if you're wondering, there's what component is when. Example would be like, when would the aluminum windows come in, you're looking there, starting midweek, you know, April. Painting, that's in the process, you know, every vendor there is, you know, got a timeline there, so, just something to refer to. And keep in mind, it's not like, that is not a stone, I mean, it ebbs and flows with that component as far as the building. The one I skipped over, just an update on the HVAC, and that's our project to finish out for this early spring throughout the summer. I did hear back from the HVAC general, and they're coming, I believe, next week, and we're gonna sit down, and he's supposed to have something on paper, but then we'll sit down and visit about that timeline and the more specifics as to what is their plan in order to finish the elementary footprint and upgrade our HVAC. So, that's kinda that update, so... The other thing in your packet, we looked at a couple of those components in there, but I put this in your packet, this is the outdoor rendition that sits on the west side, so, that's what you're gonna see on the west side, is this document here, I think Craig and I visited, and the principal is not so sure about the home of black Trojan, Parks and Trojans, blue, the head isn't going to change, other than the appropriate head, we use the symbol without the year, and I've, they, that will get updated, but, you know, that head itself is nine foot, ten inches tall and it's seven foot, four inches wide. And I'm getting pricing on, instead of twenty and sixteen letter sizes, twenty-two and, I believe, twenty, twenty-four and twenty, sorry. So, he's supposed to be getting some ideas and some numbers on that, just so you had an idea what that rendition is gonna look like. So, when we were in that weight room, I got color swatches, today I gotta go do some matching on, but that Parkston wrestling will be on that north wall, that Trojan with the mascot would be on that, excuse me, what did I say, what? Parkston wrestling on the north wall, the Trojans and the mascot on the west wall, do they still stay that long? North wall, I said, right?
Yeah.
Just so you had some ideas. So, that's really all I have on that update there.
Sir, I just have a question on, it seemed like you had a meeting or two before, and it must be working right, you mentioned about the boiler, are we gonna be digging into that?
Yeah, so, I'm still waiting for Mitchell Plumb and Heating to give me a quote. So, those two boilers over here in the armory, that run the armory, a couple other places too, those pumps need to be replaced, there's one that went bad in one of those boilers, so, it's just one, but the big issue is, is to isolate those, those two boilers, it's the valves, there isn't a valve, any, none of those valves will hold, so, the water, just, you know, what's up there just keeps flowing, so, you can't isolate that one boiler well enough to take out the pump because you're gonna lose all your fluid out of it, so, we're gonna have to end up capturing the fluid, you're gonna have to replace the valves because they're shot, they won't hold anyway, and then, and all that in order to replace the one pump in the boiler. So, I'm waiting for a quote to be from them in order to do that, and they're gonna do it to work while they're here, 'cause they're the lead on the project, the replacement, the retrofit, so, they're here anyway, but I don't have any numbers yet. So, that's what I'm waiting for, but good question.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to discussion item E is capital outlay quotes, the school board will, will discuss capital outlay projects, quotes received for the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth school year.
So, I believe you had this document in there somewhere, I'm hoping, you know, so, that's something that we've looked at in prior meetings, there's a list there, we do, and the things that I've gotten or received quotes for, included them in your packet, so, we can have some conversation, discussion about those. You know, most of the things that, number two, on this particular document, if you look at the wall mats, you know, that's, we received that rendition and the quote for those wall mats, did I put that in there?
Yeah.
Great, twenty-one, I wanna say it was twenty-one. So, twenty-one thousand, I have yet to receive anything from, for competition sheer mat replacement. The fitness area, new weight and cardio with quick cuddle and pull, we've had that number for quite some time, that number is staying solid, we locked in with that particular vendor, and they're just waiting. I believe they've ordered all the stuff, they have all the stuff, and whenever, you know, we get confirmation, we can use that space or at least transition into that, then they will show up and do that retrofit. The door security access, we did do that last month with Convergent and to put new card readers on all of our outdoor doors as well as the new footprint as well, so, we have that already in. Camera security showed up today, we're waiting for a quote on that. Tony can probably speak to that a little bit better than I do, but we're talking, what do we say, six cameras, I think?
Six cameras, about, just seven.
Seven, yes. And one's like a three-way?
Three-way, one three-way and two two-ways, and then could be one individual.
One, yeah, so, we're waiting for a quote on them. The bleacher quote, I believe, was in your packet, that's Craig was talking about that a little bit over there in the new facility. Have the differentiation between what we call, they're both portable sets, but it's aluminum versus individual. You see the eighteen inch blue like you have in your armory versus just a free roll aluminum set of bleachers, and quite a significant difference, I think, for the one, the, and you got two different companies there, by the way. You should have something in there from Combined Building Specialties, they, they have that tip and roll, that plastic individual, that's for nine of them, there's forty thousand dollar quote there, and the aluminum tip and roll, quoting for, that was for four fifteen footers, quite a significant difference, and that's about seventeen thousand, so... And then, I believe, we got a quote for Innovative, those aluminum bleachers I wrote on there, and it's, they can come in different sections, so, if you wonder why there's more than one, more bleachers than one another, it's backing our way into that seventy-one, seventy-two feet, and then, that particular quote there is for eleven thousand five. So, I can't sit here, nor will I sit here and tell you a hundred percent that Combined Building Specialties aluminum bleacher, it's apples to apples to Innovative's aluminum bleacher, so...
Did the Innovative one, I don't think that included, it's like putting them together, did it? If I remember right?
I can't remember what he told me, Craig, or told us, I, that's a great question, if we have to assemble those, they come in.
Where the other one were assembled.
Yes, they'll roll off a truck and we have to put them together, and maybe in Innovative's where Combined Building Specialty, you do, you do not, so... And maybe in Innovative's where Combined Building Specialty, you do, you do not, so. But I can certainly check on that.
Yeah, I don't remember for sure.
So I'm gonna work with Combined Building Specialties. I have a call into them about scoreboards. They do that as well. Remember, that was on our own in that project, that was not part of the project. And just some quotes on some prices on that. And I suspect we're looking at either, I don't know, size-wise, either four by six, six by eight, somewhere in there. I mean, you don't wanna put something too small in there to look, you know, that looks kind of goofy for the size that's in there. But there's two scoreboards in there, and it's all wired and stuff. It just, we have to do that on our own. They're coming to do the rest of the work. So I got a question for them as to what that's gonna cost them if they would add two scoreboards, work with us on separately. Other than that, we're looking at Dakota, or not Dakota. What's their name?
Daktronics.
Yeah. Daktronics. Daktronics to go through that, so. But I haven't got to that point yet. And then I just talked with Scott tonight about stopping by here between him and their little Todd in their company to look at some of that curb out there, so. If you look at down to number seven, I don't, or four, sorry, we don't have a quote in the morgue yet. Number seven irrigation on the practice fields out there. Just so you know, we talked about a well. I mean, that was a 50,000-foot view, and there you go. That's what I got out of that. So when I, I didn't, that's the only company I talked to, it was Coranda. And they do not dig their own wells. They work with a company out of Nebraska to actually do that. They do all the pump and stuff like that, but they don't dig. But bottom line is, they said to do a well, minimum. They don't care how deep, whatever it is, doesn't matter. You're looking at 50 grand to do that, so. And they gave me a whole list of things to do, and I'm like, okay, when I get time, I'll send them what they want. But I, I haven't pursued that as of yet, so. Parking lot repairs, I believe I put that in there. Yep, by, from Proseal. I didn't get anything back from Clark paving on that yet. I know they do that. I went out there and lined that. So I walked that whole footprint, so about the 6,000 linear feet of crack that's out there. This guy said, yeah, I'll do whatever, let me know. He said, but you, I want you to know, he said, the stuff that's out there right now that's in crack is a self-leveling putty type of deal. He said it's gray. He said ours is, it's oil. I mean, it's an oil-based component. So you're gonna have a spider web out there. And do you want that aesthetically? So think of every crack that's out there, you're gonna have a six-inch wide piece of black striping that's gonna follow a crack. That's gonna do that. So, just so you're aware. I mean, you got 6,000 linear feet of crack out there, and I'm not talking like, this, some of it is that, but a majority of it, I mean, we got gaps out there like that. And they'd sandblast it all, or not sand, well, sand, blow it all out, and then use their thing and walk behind it and seal all your cracks. You do not have to do toilet paper. He said that's only if you want people on it right away. So other than that, he said it sets up in about an hour, he said. So that's that. I have yet to hear anything back on the armory, excuse me, the MPR roofline repair, as well as the gutters that are supposed to be replaced. He was working again on something on the roof, or that roof line for the MPR. The door magnets, on the next page, I do have that code in there. And that's synonymous or aligns with what we've done in the past about what they've charged to finish that up, so. And then I have yet to receive anything on remodel or the lunchroom commons bathroom. So I just talked to Austin at the end of last week, and said he'd get up here and measure it up. But that would be, that would be replicating what we did in the high school girls and boys bathroom. And that, that's like a night and day difference in there. And they have yet to destroy anything, so pretty good for a bunch of kids. So it held up. And then the cabinetry and the art room, we're still working on a footprint on that. As far as the total costs. And the last thing would be carpet. I did, you see an innovative number there? Yeah, just.
Actually two of them.
Yeah, so one is for the choir room, and then one is for three classrooms. But I got another quote today from actually Thornton Flooring. I don't know what I did with it. I thought I put it in my packet. But their bid, or their quote for the three classrooms and the music room was a total of 19,000. Where this one was eight for the choir, and I think 18 for the three. Now, is it total apples to apples? No, I know it's not. And that's what you'd hear from one or the other. Well, it's not the same stuff. Well, I can't, we all got their own vendors they work with. I can't sit there and, I'm not gonna spec out carpet. The size of the room is the size of the room. And that's both of those quotes on both companies. It's tearing out, it's prepping, and it's laying, and it's got the cold mold, or the molding around the bottom. So obviously a distinct difference in the two. Okay?
Do you want us to?
So, yeah, I mean, whatever ones that you got in there, if you say yea or nay to, I guess. So I don't know which way to take them, I guess. If you wanna go to that, you know, your initial one, and then I can report that. So if you go to this document, I can write them on here. You start how you want, or you know, you got, you can say, what about this one? Let's start with that.
Yes, sir. I put all of these things in, in the quotes that we have. And the number we, based on that, I mean, it's very close, or a little more than what our initial talk was for capital outlay. I'm just telling you that.
Yeah, we'll have to prioritize here. You don't, you can't do them all.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so we had like 800, some thousand?
Yeah, I'm talking the 1.2 million now.
Okay.
This can't be part of that.
With the, because remember, we have one more year of 66,000.
Oh, this is.
Just one more.
This is just to show us how much it was.
And then we have the payment, the interest payment, and the principal payment of the capital certificates. But we should have 800, it's roughly about 800,000 left after those things, yes.
And these bleachers are not part of that.
And I'm just saying, the totals.
They are, so this one doesn't count either. So did you go with one?
You got a priority, you can't do everything.
I, we haven't done anything.
Do we need to decide which one?
Yeah, you can. We should, if we wanna get it in order, so. Craig, I don't know, I didn't mean to interrupt there, detract from what you were explaining, John's question, but clarifying for Jill. Is that wall mats and the wrestling room? That's not part of the money we're talking about.
It's already ordered, so you don't need to worry about that one.
So anything in number two that you see there?
I, that's what I mean, I'm not talking one, yes, or number two, those, yeah. Those things are not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking three on down.
We just need to decide which aluminum bleachers, right? Are you guys gonna, what do you?
I mean, that's completely, I mean, remember, they come in three different sizes. I don't know if we need 15-footers, because they might be kind of hard to maneuver around.
That's more about the expenditure.
And to me, the difference is, do we want aluminum? We can order whatever sizes we want in that, I mean, within reason, I shouldn't say. They came in seven, six, nine, and 15, if I remember right. The one company did. The other company might've had a 12-footer, because there was two different companies, and I can't remember.
Combined Building Specialties and then Innovative.
Yeah, one of them only had certain sizes.
This one says 12 and nine, this one says 15.
Yeah, that's combined.
But Combined did say they had other sizes they could get them into. Might affect price just a little bit, because it's a little more assembly or whatever.
So this is one we're already working with?
They're the ones that have the bid for the hoops and things like, and the netting and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, so if we got smaller bleachers than the 15s, we feel like it would come down. Because they're not really comparative. This one's a 12 and nine, this one's 15. So like, this would make, if we got smaller ones from them, the price would come down. No, it stays the same to the rest of us.
Because we're still gonna get the same amount of feet.
Oh, I see.
It's linear, yeah. It's just how you back your way into that line.
And how big a pieces you wanna maneuver.
Yeah.
But I would, in my opinion, go with the aluminum over the plastic. A, it's cheaper. B, we could, you know, maybe get one or two extra if we wanted to, and just that space. And C, those blue bleachers, yes, they've got a designated spot. But unless you're gonna snuggle with the person you say, that one's gonna go blank, or you're gonna sit on the crack. So I mean, with the aluminum, I don't think people are gonna be sitting there that long. You know, it's not like the armory, we're gonna be there forever, so I think for that purpose.
Which, which company I think is more?
I don't, I, they're working, already working with them.
That's what I was wondering, do we wanna go with them?
But the innovative, depending on if that's installed or not, are quite a bit cheaper still.
Yeah. It's another five.
We know, we don't know if they're installed or not.
Combined would match.
Don't remember.
Don't say installed, let's say.
Assembled, assembled, there we go.
I, no, I'd have to clarify that.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Because that, that would definitely make.
A difference.
A difference.
If they're coming off the truck in boxes and in planks, and we gotta put it together, then.
And I would do the more expensive one, because that's gonna be challenging.
Well, you guys can figure.
Yeah, you guys figure that out, then, what you wanna.
Okay.
Okay, so this one, we're with this one. Okay, so what else we got here? So we can skip to?
So I'm probably backing up just a step here. So overruns. How are we on our project out here?
Yeah, we're well within your contingency.
I'm just concerned that we're talking 800,000 or whatever, or we just don't want surprises that we're spending money and we aren't covered.
All your, all your change orders are so far well within the contingency that's in that budget.
About 200,000 or something.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got a lot left, yeah. So, yep. Change orders have been minimal. And then the change orders that you have, that we've gotten some money back on because of the change orders, there's been some savings on that, so. I mean, we're far from being upside down in your contingencies allotted for change orders. And I don't remember exactly, that number, like 300,000, I think was that number.
I just remember it was over two.
Yeah, I think it's closer to three, if I remember right. I'd have to go look that up, but we're not anywhere near. In fact, if we have change orders, well, I take that back. With the high school office, if you remember that whole concept. But other than that, I mean, I don't know if we've, are over $150 yet, or 150,000 in change orders yet. But I'll write that down, John, and I'll make sure I have it for May.
I just wanna make sure that we're.
It's a good, it's a great question, so we need to watch that. But all the change orders, the ones that I put my name on and tried to bring to you guys, and some of them, they're small enough that it's like $1,000 here, 2,000 there. I mean, there's a few of those that we haven't went through every one of them. But anything of significant number, like, oh my, it's coming your guys' way. So, and there hasn't been a lot of them, so been a pretty straightforward project.
And these total of number two, approximate, this is, best guess right now is right around 300,000. For the total of all of these things.
Number two.
Yeah.
And half of that is the fitness space that's.
Yes, yep.
Okay, just real quick, just clarifying question on the bleachers. So is it decided, are we gonna go just the long way, or with the aluminum, are we gonna go along the base?
That's where, the first initial is to go along that south wall. That's where Matt's suggesting, if we cheapen it up, then we can buy a few more. Depending on what event is in there, then you'll have some to, you know. Plus, that MPR north wall is not even close to what is in that multi-use south wall. As far as the length.
No, but number seating, it's 20 less.
I'm talking from east to west. It's gonna be, you'll have, it'll be short. Then you have the ability, what we've talked about on east wall, in my direction, yes. Yes. That you could put some of them behind there. And you could even put some back on the west wall. So that's just a number of actually measuring it out.
Perfect. I thought it was curious how that would fit together.
The biggest thing there is.
Storage.
Thank you.
Can we fit it all in?
Where we, we can't go overboard here, because where are we gonna put them?
Right.
So.
Okay. So this number eight, it says bleachers in the current MPR facility, which is what the aluminum ones would cover as well, right?
Yeah, and we're gonna remove them ourselves.
Okay.
So there's no expense.
So it's really nothing then for this one?
No, exactly.
Is there things on here that you would prioritize, like one, two, three, or what would, what do you, what would be your suggestion?
Well, so, I mean, one thing I want to take, and I don't have a number for you yet, so I apologize for that, would be the cabinetry in the art room. So the door magnets, for what he's charging for that, I mean, that would finish that high school end where everything is cold then, you know, so.
We're gonna have to do that, don't we, really?
Well, you wouldn't, but you're just kicking the can down the road there. But the price on that is, you know, it's a fair price, based on what he's, what the quotes we've had from years past, so. Same with the concept of the lunchroom commons. I think we budgeted 75 for that last year, and I don't know, I think we came in under that, Craig, if I remember right, I think.
Barely.
Was it 60, 65, 66, 67?
I think it was just over seven.
So, okay, so over seven, so. And I don't have that number yet, but I think the number one for you is, is what do you wanna do with the parking lot? I mean, Matt, you said that was, and it is a concern, but you can't keep kicking that can down the road. At some point in time, you're gonna be.
No, we got cracks, no, pretty soon we're gonna have holes.
You got that started in a couple places.
I was saying, there's a few sections I think should be replaced. But I don't know.
Do you want the puzzled look?
Not really.
Not really, I don't.
Is that other? I want the gray sealer. I want their, I want their, their oil-based in gray. That's what I want.
You can ask.
I'd say there's that, you're waiting for a quote from another.
Clark.
Clark, maybe they got a different product or color or whatever.
Craig, you help me. Who did it last time?
The, all that crack fill was done by Wyden Buck.
I was just gonna say, is Wyden Buck?
But they don't do that stuff anymore.
No.
Well, they, they just wanna haul.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's who did all the gray crack fill that is done out there. So somebody can do it, it's just.
Find any vendor that can.
Or there's a material there to do.
Well, maybe we put out some different bids, get some numbers back.
Yeah, I.
Barcher would have an idea who would do it too?
No, no.
Maybe Barcher would have an idea who could.
Yeah, right. I know, yeah, I can ask Steve about that, for sure.
If he has anybody in mind.
And I mean, I get the gray, because it, it does its job, and you really don't notice it. So I'm hearing ya. But he said, I said, well, do you do that? He said, well, no, that's not our product. He said, we don't, what ours isn't gonna be like that. It's gonna be that six inch and.
And I see that, that's, you know, yeah.
Well, I assume we have to do the repair. I mean, I ain't saying that we have to do everything tonight, but I assume you wanna do number 12.
The roof line, yeah.
But you don't have a number yet.
Well, he gave, remember that one he did give me? You could put that one on there for 39. I'm like, why, we just placed the whole armory for 100 for 300,000. It seemed a little absurd, and he agreed, so. It's a new guy in that chair, and it's a far cry from working with the guy that used to be in that chair. Because I would've had all this stuff by now. But the guy's still getting his feet wet, so trying to be a little bit tolerant. And they've, you know, they've done, they've come and done all our other things, so I'm just trying to work, work with them to get through that process, so. And I do have a quote for the gutter repair. That was, I think, 5 grand, five or six grand.
For the.
Yeah, for that east, east wing, elementary side.
Does this need to be, the carpet need to be?
And the carpet is, yeah, well, you know, the, the music room?
I put it in there, yeah.
You know, that's pretty bad. I mean, it's not, it's not aesthetically appealing at all. It's fraying, and it's ripped, half of it's, I mean, there's places, and it's, that hasn't been upkeep. I mean, there's stains all over it, so. Those other three classrooms down here in that elementary wing, the two on the north side, I'm pretty sure they haven't never been replaced since it was built. And they didn't get replaced during the flood.
We haven't put a carpet in a room since it flooded, in any, either end.
So there's a pot of four there.
Seven got done at that time, though, seven rooms.
But that pot of four, I was looking at, one got replaced out of the one, and we were thinking, we traced it back, that maybe there was some mold in there after the fact or something? I don't know why, but whatever, but the other three didn't, they haven't been touched, and they're, that's, they're wearing. I mean, it's beyond wearing. In fact, I would say two of them on the east side, they're just as bad as the music room.
So, can we look at the other quote?
Yeah, it's nineteen, I mean.
Well, I mean, whatever, I guess, if you guys.
It's nineteen fifty-four.
We just wanna do the other one versus this one, if we're gonna replace them, it's cheaper and, or more.
Can we get a product sample from each company, see what they're actually bidding? You know, what, what importance is bidding is junk, I mean. And is it laid-out carpet, is it the squares, do you know, or?
Laid-out carpet.
Yeah, it's.
Every carpet we've done before, we've always went through Kane Furniture here in town, and he just, I don't know, just, he said, this guy said this is the same carpet you have right here in the office, is what he.
This guy, meaning these, Thornton, or?
Thornton.
Okay.
And when you have the sample of that, this stuff isn't, you know, there's not a lot to it, I mean, it's.
It was not carpet squares, though, to your question, they do have that, but he said it is, it will not considerably more, but it is more.
True. And I'm sorry, the locker rooms, the seams in the locker rooms of those squares are not holding.
But this comes in rolls.
So this is just like the one we have in here?
Yes.
That's what they.
Yep, this is, this was done a while, so three years ago, it's a trap that we're interested in.
That, all that pathway does, going through there from the office, that's good traffic, but yeah, not over here, no.
I guess I feel if we gotta prioritize, I'd do the repairs, the parking lot, the roof, gutters, and then, especially the parking lot, I mean, that's, if that gets out of hand, that's gonna get ugly.
So we got a parking lot, and then armory, or excuse me, MPR roof, right, and gutters?
That's my thoughts, great.
And the door magnets?
I'm missing that.
Let's do that.
Gotcha, thank you. That's a need, I mean, that's, I'd say one of the.
Five forty, five hundred.
So that's a good, good place to start anyway, and see what you got left.
Yeah, until I get those other numbers for you, so, but we'll definitely, so I have parking lot repairs, I got MPR bridge line and gutter repair, and then I got the door magnets to finish that high school end, and then what's left out there is essentially the remodel of the lunchroom, the class, or commons bathroom, and then that cabinet tree for the art, or for the art room, so.
And just so you guys know, when, the carpet stuff, when I budget that in the budget, that's always been part of, I have twenty-five thousand dollars for high school equipment replacement, and twenty-five thousand dollars for elementary equipment replacement. And when we do those rooms, we've just been taking out of that pot, it's not an additional money from the. So what we do is we back our, whatever then, the teachers or like student desks, teacher desks, all that stuff that we've been replacing, we don't need to right now, the reason why we did it was we just got seven rooms of carpet, so then we went to that, well, now, I mean, it's gonna come out of that pot. That are, it's not additional, I mean, I've got like seven, eight things that are every year, no matter what, this is the budget, and it's one of those seven things.
Sure.
Okay. So you got a good place to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'm, I'm good with that, so.
Okay, do we need it, your, do you need us to approve anything with those bills, or?
These quotes?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just a directive, so we're with those vendors, so.
Okay, we'll move to discussion item F, which is discuss used light pole offering. The school board will discuss an offering from St. Benedict Hospital on their offer to donate the used parking lot light poles they replaced.
Other than that, I just talked to Dave Dorian, he stopped me one day when I was down by the hospital, and he just suggested, I mean, he just, would you guys be interested in? I don't have allegiance to any of this, don't care, the only thing I thought of was, you know, we really don't have any lighting on that north side of the new multi-use space, there are two wall packs on that north side that are in the footprint, but those wall packs have a tendency to shine down on the sidewalk that runs out in front of that, so actual lighting in the parking lot, I mean, there may be enough on that light pole in the corner, I don't know. And I said, I called the other day, I said, is this for free? He said, well, if you, if you guys decide you want them, so be it. But as I put in my notes, you're gonna have to build two pedestals if you did two of them, I talked to Fisher Electric about that, and they said, well, certainly, I mean, if you guys are interested in doing that, but, you know, Dave was telling me, price-wise, you're looking at probably four, somewhere between four and five for the pedestal and then run the wire, and, you know, they, they were still operable when they took them down, I mean, they're not broken, it's not that they don't work, I don't.
Did Parkston, who's doing, that's not Parkston, it's, who's the electrician?
Fisher.
Fisher, did he mention how big the lights are gonna be on the building, cause I mean, you can get some pretty big ones, and they, I mean.
Yeah, but it's specked out for what it is on that north side.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, if we would upgrade the, the light.
I can ask.
I mean, how much more would it be, I can't, I can't imagine it'd be five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And, cause how far out does that cement go, it doesn't.
In front of that, yeah, well, not much.
Yeah, so I would think you'd be able to get something, just off the building pretty easy.
And I, I don't know what the looms are, even the ones that they got specked, cause I did ask him, I said, well, is it gonna shine out in the parking lot? And he said, well, his only concern was that most wall packs are designed for, it comes out the bottom of the wall pack, it doesn't shine this way. What they have is shines down, but can we change that?
I don't know what the definition of a wall pack is, but I mean, we've got some mounted on the side of buildings at our place, and I mean, they shoot out.
That's just where the light, where the light focuses, same wall pack, yours, yours is facing this way, this one actually faces down. The light comes out of the bottom of the wall pack, is what he told me.
I guess I would check into it just to see.
Hey.
Couple hundred dollar more in light fixtures.
Yeah, I asked them, I'm all, I'll ask.
So probably not interested in this, what I'm hearing?
That was like the only place we could think of to use it.
Yeah, no.
Whatever I thought of, and I don't, it's gonna be a bigger deal, but it's pretty dark out on the east side here, but I mean, if you put them in there and had some wire, you'd have to have directional boring underneath the cement, that would kinda turn into a, a project on itself, but yeah, other than that, I don't know, right now.
Considerably more.
Yeah.
Especially if you're bringing a bore.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we'll move to discussion item G, discuss southeast gravel entrance, the school board will discuss a plan from South Dakota National Guard to gravel and reshape the southeast entrance from Chapman to the cement in the parking lot.
So I, I mean, I put that in your packet, you know, Matt, you, you referenced back that, you know, concerns about the type of gravel, it seemed to be more sand than gravel, but, I mean, and again, something I'm bringing to you guys, I got complaints on it, I, you know, just happened to be talking to Sergeant Gregerson about that, and he said, by the way, he said, we got drilled this weekend, he said, we're looking for something to do, he said, we're gonna be drilling out of that pit. He said, we'll load it up, we'll haul it here, and we'll put a guy in, maintainer, and we'll reshape that, so what's that gonna cost? He said, nothing.
Other than you pay for the gravel?
Yeah, that's, that's a good deal, I just wouldn't, um, I don't know what kind of gravel they, they have there, I mean, we get sand there a lot, but.
They have, they have screened and unscreened.
Yeah.
And the screen, unscreened is a little more expensive, it's got more rock in it, but it's not, I don't think it's a lot more expensive.
When I talked to him, uh, down there, I forget his name, Mike, yeah, Mike, essentially, and that's the difference, well, it's, it's gravel you can put on a road, I don't know what that means, but I assume it's got rock in it, but I, I would understand it's got, you know, do I need to ask specifically screened and unscreened, I mean, I can do that, but.
Yeah, get a price on the rocky earth.
Sure, more rock than matter, is that fair, fair to say?
You don't want clay.
You don't want it to run.
Right, but you don't want sand either.
Yeah, no, that's true, I mean, I've, I think we got a little bit, I can't remember, just tortoise, I've got it from girls, you know, it's the one with them guys to go, so.
It needs to be done.
I think it's.
I mean, I've talked to everybody around here, and they're like, oh, I don't think we've ever put anything on that. I mean, Craig, you, you been here, what, twenty?
Yep.
Have you ever?
We've just, we've always talked about whether or not to cement it or asphalt it, and that always runs into that draining problem in that corner.
And, and I think there's some property lines, property lines are not, it's not specifically know where those are at.
Yeah.
So there was some issues there.
Oh, to, to pour, uh.
And to take care of the draining issue.
We are not gonna get a better price than that for hauling gray for free, so, I mean, if we have to, if we have to do it again in three years, I guess, we're not gonna haul a lot, so, I mean.
Yeah, I. Ten bucks, ten bucks a ton, man. Good.
I agree with Matt.
I will, I will have the conversation about making sure that it actually has a rock in it.
Rocks, of course.
Yeah.
He'll, he'll help gravel township roads, so he'll fill you talk about.
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to action items. Action item A is to approve financial report, we'll review the March financial report for discussion and approval.
Put your golden rod copy in there. Any questions? Numbers look okay, you can see that we're upside down in capital out, like Craig, you may, I know you've explained it the last two months, but you might wanna circle back to that.
Um, yeah, last year, I looked, did a little work on that, last year we ended the year at three hundred and some thousand dollars in cash left over, after all expenses, so to start this year, that's what we had. And then taxes, so we've spent all of it, the thing is, we got a big, I made the payment, but we have taxes coming in, and that's next month, so we'll see. I mean, it should be a bigger chunk, you know, half of eight hundred, well, it's actually half of one point two, so, should be the bigger chunk, like six, seven hundred, between six hundred and some thousand, right around there.
I see this date aid, when, when do you get that, Craig, is that quarterly or something?
No, that's every month.
Every month?
Yeah.
That amount?
Two hundred and seventeen thousand, yeah, yeah. The scholarship fund thing?
Yeah, that's your.
We, um, we're working with Parkston, so we've gotten, the reason why that's grown, and Mr. Akery and I talked about that too, we've got three payments, and he talked to this person that we get, it's from the Sioux Falls Community Foundation. Some person has been donating around ten thousand dollars a year, but he tried to call him, got nothing. So I went down to Mike Borke, can we just move this into the area foundation? Well, there's endowment issues and things like that, that gets too high and things and stuff, so, we finally found the number that we, he got from the Sioux Falls Community Foundation of this lady out of Florida, which is this lady's relative of some sort. But when Jim called him, they never got back to him ever, and we just keep getting a check, so we've gotten two checks, and then the third one this year. So we may, we talked about it today, I mean, we'll try, we're gonna try to get ahold of that lady out of Florida, and if it comes out to about, you know, the original thing that we found was, give it to all students that are going into post-secondary education, okay? Well, then they also had a wording in there, but we wanted to go towards people that had to work and weren't able to participate in extracurricular activities. And Jim's like, I'm not picking that, not for twelve thousand dollars. So he, he told this guy, we need to talk to somebody, the guy never got back to him, never got back to him, then, that was the first year, and then we got another check second year, doing it again the third year now, so we finally, we'll have to call this lady in Florida, cause they wanted a committee, and then that lady had to be on the committee. But if you give it to every post-secondary person, then it's three hundred and some dollars a person. And that's what Jim and I wanna do, is just write a check to each person for three hundred, whoever's going into post-secondary, who has the last three years, we can go back and figure it out, write them a check for three hundred and fifty dollars to their name, to get rid of, so that's why that bounces.
Yeah, I just noticed it's bigger.
Yeah, it's been like that for all year.
I mean, it's, you can't.
I was hoping just to give it, because it's the same concept, that's what the Parkston Community or Parkston Area Foundation does with the telethon. We'll just donate it to the telethon, and then.
It's a great gift, but give us some direction as to.
Yes.
How to disperse it.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so if there are no further questions, we just see a motion to approve.
So moved.
Else I can do.
Move by Sean Feller, signed by Neeble. Any other discussion? Here, none, no, favorite staff?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried.
All right, action item B is to consider sealed bids for surplus floor scrubber, the school board will discuss changes to the proposed.
I don't know, I must have not, to the proposal, I guess, so.
Okay, no worries.
I didn't spell it correctly, it's my fault.
You, you want me to open this up?
Yep.
This one, for twelve hundred, on the floor scrubber. Okay? Can I just go with that? Okay, all right, approve that.
Who's it from?
Jason Summer. Do you want this?
No.
So I need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Okay. Move by Neeble, signed by Lashon, any other discussion? Here, none, no, favorite staff?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried.
All right, we'll do, action item C is to approve student transportation agreement with KND Bussing. School board will discuss the terms of the contract with KND Bussing for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
If possible, because it's a contract, and there's some negotiations involved in that with KND Bussing, I think there's some considerations there that we want some members, you to be aware of. So, because it's, it works with other school districts as well, we could go in, talk about some of those changes, then come out, make a decision about what that is, so. You'd have to do the first portion of that, and then in nego, or in executive session for negotiations, and then come out of there and make a decision on what that is, so.
Okay.
And the prices will, can be revealed at that time, so.
Okay, all right, so we'll move to action item D is to accept resignation.
Um, I don't know, it's been a while since we've done that, but essentially, I don't know, I could read the letter, I could just give you the name too, so, just, today, we just received the letter of resignation for five through twelve instrumental director, Mr. Larson, so, um, he just, I think he's looking to go back to north central Iowa, um, thanks, uh, Parkston School District for the opportunity to begin his career here. He's finishing his third year, and just, I think, looking to go back home, to be honest with you, so. Wanted to thank the community and the district for their support, the entire music program, wish for growth and prosperous future for the program, so. It's accepting that resignation, so.
Okay, same motion to approve.
So moved. Move by Sean Feller, signed by Paul, any other discussion? Here, none, no, favorite staff?
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried.
All right, well, I'll take a, clear the room, move to executive session.